Okay, so it's six o'clock. We're gonna open the October 30th meeting of the East Long Metal Planning Board, and I have to announce that we are recording this for the minutes and also for LCAT. Do you have the recorder going?
We do not have a recorder. We're going to rely upon...
Just LCAT, okay.
LCAT.
Then, fine.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anyone else here is recording the meeting?
I don't think there's any.
Hearing none? First thing I'm gonna announce is that both zone change requests have been rescheduled to November 20th due to an advertising error. And I'm gonna ask a motion to take item nine out of order for continued public hearing.
Motion to move number nine out of order.
I need a second.
Second, Ed.
Okay, we have a request for continuance on 604 North Main Street, and so I will take a motion to continue that to November 20th at 6:00 p.m.
Motion to continue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, having done that, go through the site plan requests.
Okay, so the first...
Oh, I know, no, I'm sorry, probably do that. Let's approve the minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a...
October 16 minutes.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
Do we have any changes or amendments to that?
I do not.
You're not either? Are you going to defer this until we have more chance to look at it?
No.
I'm good.
You're good.
You're good, okay. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Get through the site plans.
Please, please sign. Could you just sign it by the back?
Yes, please. Oh, you know what they say, draft. Does she usually print the... Notice the meeting minutes they draft? Does Tracy usually provide a...
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, in the past, I've seen a draft and then like a final minutes when we get it here.
Okay.
So, I'll just re-sign it. The draft has been signed, and when I have a...
I will get you...
Or just do this.
And just reprint the first page without the draft on it.
There you go.
Any port in a storm right now, we're working under duress.
That worked. I initial the change.
Thank you, sir. Alright.
Okay, first one.
East Long Metal Request for Waiver Site Plan Review. Property owner is Diane Nadeau, 20 Ridge Point Drive, UHD Boynton, Florida. Boynton Beach, Florida. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Sedwick. Owner of business is Sedwick Claims Management Services, Inc. Business owner's address is 1100 Ridgeway Loop Road, Memphis, Tennessee. Property address is 15 Benton Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. The district is industrial. It isn't allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number of employees is one. Date of last parking plan has been blank. The application has been signed and dated September 21st, 2018.
I believe that that is actually industrial garden park.
Yeah, it says industrial, so, but I believe it is as well.
Yeah. It's business in an existing building. It's not allowed use. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
East Long Metal Request for Waiver Site Plan Review. Property owner is Socia Property Management, LLC. Owner's address is 15 High Point Circle, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Right at Home. Owner of business is Jose Seed. Business owner's address is 30 Oak Brook Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. Property address is 51 Prospect Street, 3rd floor, East Long Metal, Mass. Property district is residential C. Proposed hours are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Summary business is Right at Home will be providing personnel and champion care... Champion care?
Companion.
Oh, companion, excuse me. Companion care to seniors and disabled people at their homes. This property will serve as office space. The application has been signed and dated October 11th, 2018.
And note that this property, we have a request to the town council to rezone it as business or commercial?
This is going to be rezoned. The proposal is to rezone to business.
Business, okay. And this is a property that's been used as business for a long time and really should be zoned business, but for some reason, it's residential, so... Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Next is Waiver Site Plan Review for property owner Dina Laffin. Owner's address is 223 Hamden Road, East Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Laffin's Ledger. Owner of business is Diana Laffin. Business owner's address is 223 Hamden Road, East Long Metal, Mass. Property address is the same. Residential A. It's an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Number of employees, including the owner, is number is one. Summary business is small business bookkeeping services offered on client's site or remotely. The application is signed and dated October 17th, 2018.
Okay, so this is a home office. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Next, we have a waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Heritage MZL LLC in care of Katz Properties, 254 West 31st Street, 4th floor, New York, New York. The owner... Phone number is listed here. Name of proposed business is Orange Therapy Fitness. Owner of business is Brian Burke. The business owner's address is 386 Green Hill Road, Long Metal, Mass. Property address is 434 North Main Street, East Long Metal, Mass. It's a commercial district. It's an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Number of employees, including the owner, is somewhere between 6 and 10. Summary business is fitness studio. Number of commercial vehicles is zero. Amount of product stored is two square feet. The application has been signed and dated October 18th, 2018.
So, this is an allowed use in a commercial zone. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And they have an orange bike out front.
Yes, they do. If I get into the orange zone, I'm in trouble. Okay, we got sign permits. We have two of them.
Connie, can you help me out with this? Is it an R or is it an S?
Zane's, it's a smoke shop.
Oh, it's a Z, okay. Town of East Long Metal Sign Permit Application dated October 11th, 2018. Zane's Smoke Shop, 61 North Main Street. Business owner's name and address is Mohammed, 17 Locust Street, Springfield, Mass. I can't read the rest of this writing here, but it looks like South Hadley. Something Eagle Drive, South Hadley. Property owner's address is Daniel Burek. Phone numbers are listed here. Square footage of proposed sign is 16. Freestanding sign is no. Height above the ground is nine feet. Attached to the building is yes. Projection, if any, is six inches. Setback from the property line is 26 feet. Distance to top of sign above vertical wall is 11 feet. It's a permanent sign. It is illuminated. Number of existing signs is zero. Number of proposed signs is one. Total square footage of proposed sign is 16. Total square footage of proposed sign and existing signs is 16. The application has been signed. The estimated work is cost is $800. And this is what it will look like.
George, just copy, actually. We got it already.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Action.
Okay, I don't see... Not any determination. Oh, yeah, here we go. We have design determination. So, the building inspector approves. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, we have another one for Zane's Smoke Shop.
Business name and address, Zane's Smoke Shop, 611 North Main Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Business owner's name and address is Mohammed, 17 Locust Street, Springfield. Property owner's name and address is Daniel Burek. Phone numbers are listed here. Square footage of proposed signs is 21. Freestanding, yes. Height above the ground is 19 feet. Attached to the building is no. Setback from the property line is 18 feet. Distance to the top of sign above vertical wall is 20 feet. It's a permanent... It's a permanent sign. It is illuminated. Number of existing signs is one. Total square footage of existing signs is 28. Total of proposed signs is two. Square footage of proposed signs is, excuse me, 49. Total square footage of proposed and existing signs is 49. The application's been signed. The estimated cost is $2,200.
Okay.
So, this other sign would also continue to be here?
Yep.
Just it would be placed on top of it?
They take them to size therapy.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And this last item is just something we're acting on because we have the request for continuance, if you've already done.
Okay.
Okay, so that's all the official business. We have... Did you want to give us a brief summary of...
Yes, we'd like to.
Overlook? Emphasis on brief?
Still a little chair here.
Yep.
And don't overlook.
Maybe block, can you...
No, go ahead.
Okay, thanks.
Hi. So, say hello to Brad Wilson.
Hi, Brad Wilson.
Hello.
Hi, Brad.
This is Morgan Connie.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you finally.
Good evening.
Brad, where'd you fly in from today?
I live in southern Iowa, little town called Tella.
Very good.
So, we were on for the agenda. He was coming here, and because of the reasons already described, it's been postponed, rescheduled. So, he was coming anyway, so his brothers was kind enough to give us a little time just to come in and say hello and go over the proposal with you and realizing it's not a public hearing and it's just a dialogue of open session discussion.
Sure.
So, as you know, Ecos is the owner of the property at Zero Rear Peas Road, has proposed a zone change from the residential status to industrial. We have gone through a roundtable that the administrators conducted and went to the selectmen who referred it here to you.
We don't have selectmen anymore.
The town council. The town council, excuse me. Town council referred you for a recommendation.
Okay.
And so, that process will be through the public hearing now scheduled for November 20th. But since Brad's here, he'd like to just give you an overview
Sure.
of the project and the plans and the issues that we think will be addressed at the hearing.
Okay.
Excellent. I prepared a handout, and we can move through that as quickly as you'd like to.
Sure.
This is specifically about my project, my solar project itself, and is not...
Can you give Ms. Brothers two more for the members who aren't here tonight?
Maybe one or two.
Maybe one or two.
So, this is about the solar project itself and is not specifically targeted around the zoning change and application, but this is an overview of the project. East Long Metal Solar Project. Really quick, Ecos Energy. We are a utility scale solar project developer and operator. We have, I think, 23 projects now that we've developed and built, and we keep all of our projects. We don't flip them once they're shovel-ready. We keep them. We own them. We operate. So, we have to live with them once they're built, and I think it gives us some good insights on how to design a good project in the first place.
This is... You're a subsidiary of Alco?
Alco is one of the companies that our owner owns along with Ecos. We have a few different LLCs used for different purposes. Ecos is the company that houses the employees.
Okay.
The land is owned by a company called PLH, but it's all the same owner.
Okay.
Ground mounted solar is what we do, and this is one of those projects. Photovoltaic solar, so the same type of solar modules you see on rooftops and businesses and things of that nature. Nothing fancy here. This is a four-megawatt project, which in the course of a year would generate the amount of energy used by approximately 800 to 1,000 average Massachusetts homes. We sell power directly to the utilities. It would be national grid in this case through a new program called the SMART program enacted by Massachusetts Legislature. This particular site is a 21-acre parcel that we own.
Is that 21 acres in East Long Meadow or...
Correct.
Is that the whole thing?
21 acres in East Long Meadow.
Okay.
Yeah, how much additional acreage is there?
In Summers. Well, we own a different parcel in Summers that is, I believe, somewhere between 40 and 50 acres.
So, the total project is gonna be roughly 70-ish?
No. This project that we're here to talk about tonight is standalone. It would be in East Long Meadow only.
So, it's only in East Long Meadow, has nothing to do with what's going on in Summers?
Correct. Well, with the exception of access.
Access.
And, well, I can definitely understand that'd be a good question, and I've got a couple pages to just do that.
Okay, good.
Sometimes people want to know, these projects have an estimated useful life of somewhere between 25 and 40 years. The project location, privately owned, we own it. Historically, it was used for some sort of orchard agriculture. I don't know exactly what the trees were there. Today, it is fallow. Hasn't been maintained in many years now, and is kind of cropping up with a lot of invasives, and no one's really doing anything with it at the moment. Undeveloped, no structures of any kind exist on the property, and as we'll mention in our access conversations, landlocked. Does not have road. Going through the next few pages quickly, we have a project location map showing exactly where...
Excuse me.
Exactly where that's located in the town, a kind of zoomed-out aerial image showing the property and the surrounding area. You can see that... So, the southern boundary of our parcel here is the state line and the town line.
Okay, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Right now, I see Eversource doing work on this line out here as recently as today. Is that for you guys? Have anything to do with you guys?
It's not having anything to do with us.
Okay.
No. That is an Eversource line, you're right. In fact, all of this land here and here
Is owned by Eversource.
is owned by Eversource.
Right.
We are... If the project was for, we would interconnect with national grid.
Yep, gotcha, okay.
There's also a gas pipe, I mean, that goes through there somewhere.
Probably.
I wouldn't be surprised.
Gas pipe's over here, George.
This one is...
Yeah, there's a separate corridor.
Yeah.
I know the gas pipe very well.
Oh, that's right. You live on it. Oh, okay.
Is that the one that runs down someone else?
Hey, I'm your landlord over there.
Right path?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
The next page is just a little bit more of a zoomed-in view, aerial view, which kind of gives you a better sense of the property in its current condition. You know, we talked about it being a wooded parcel, but it actually has been mostly cleared in the past, and so there is not a tremendous... You can see the difference between, you know, this parcel and the surrounding parcels. The surrounding parcels are that very dense, you know, hasn't been touched recently, forest vegetation. Our parcel is much more cleared already.
We presume the prior owners logged it, so they cleared it.
Yep.
Yep.
Next page is just showing some parcel lines. We only have one butter that is not Eversource, and that is this parcel here.
Yep.
Which is...
Who is that owner?
It's an LLC called Farms and... Redstone Farms and Barnes LLC.
Yeah.
Is that the same?
John Pearson?
Correct.
Here's the gas line.
Yeah, yeah.
The next few pages, we can certainly go through as quickly or slowly as you'd like. I just included some photos just to kind of give you an idea of the type of equipment that's installed for these. I think solar projects becoming a lot more common in that in this area, so, you know, in some communities we go into, we need to kind of start from scratch on educating what is a solar project. But here, we can go through these quickly. One page I will point out to you specifically is this page. We would propose that this project be installed with a ballast foundation system, which is concrete footings that are poured in plastic buckets. They sit on the ground surface, so there's no subsurface concrete. There's no metal being pounded into the ground. This allows for much easier installation and also much easier decommissioning at the end of the project's useful life.
They're four feet deep?
The...
Below the rock line?
No, no, they sit...
No, they're on top of the ground.
They sit right on the surface.
Oh, so they don't even go down?
Correct.
So, you don't... Well, I don't need to get into that now, but...
Yeah, yeah, so they... You basically get a plastic bucket.
Yep.
Set it there. You set up a jig to set the post, and then you have concrete poured in, and so it literally just sits on the surface. So, there's
Okay.
very, very little subsurface work to be done
Good.
with these types of projects. Very low-impact way to install.
Did you do the one in Hamden on Hill Road?
No, we only have one project in Massachusetts, and that's in Spencer.
Okay.
And that's a three-megawatt project, whereas this is a four. So, similar in size. Next few pages, there's a couple of equipment pads similar to this. There's a perimeter fence that's used typically installed, though in this location, we, you know, potentially not do a perimeter fence around the solar array and only do the equipment pads, but that's open for discussion. Gravel access driveway, and there, we kind of reached the end of any sort of infrastructure we're talking about. They are large projects, but actually very simple in their design and construction. There is not a lot of different elements to talk about. We have a few just aerial images of other projects that I've built over the years. I didn't want to show you all 23 of them, however, so try to keep it a little bit short. Past the aerial images is a draft site plan.
So, this is not what you're considering as...
That is what they consider.
This is.
That is what we propose.
That's the support system.
Yep, absolutely. It just takes the questions and headaches out of installation and makes removal at the end of the project's life far more straightforward, so... Draft site plan. You see how we're proposing to use this portion of the property? There is a natural kind of crown of the land where on the west side of where the driveway's located and the east side, the land kind of slopes down in a way, so that's the natural location for there to be a break. We have areas designated for stormwater retention ponds, and then there's an area in the southwestern corner where there's an old farm pond. TBD on whether that would be considered jurisdictional wetland or not. We're working with the wetland sites to evaluate it, but for now, we've assumed it is and have put it there with a 100-foot buffer to remain untouched with this site design. The next couple of pages deal with the question of access. So, we do also own a larger property directly south in Summers, and that has a separate solar project that has been approved by the Connecticut Solar Siding Council. And this is how we would propose for access to be granted. Obviously, we do not have frontage. This is a landlocked parcel. Be difficult to develop anything on that parcel in East Long Meadow, but we do own the property to the south, and so we would propose that fronted, you know, access to the site be gained off of Bilton Road in Summers. The following page kind of shows how that would look. We've included big plans for the solar project in Bilton to be shown there, and we have a basically gravel access drive coming off of Bilton Road up to the north, across the state line, and into the East Long Meadow project. So, Jim mentioned a kind of roundtable discussion we had a little bit earlier this year with some of the administrative staff and town department leaders, and the fire department and the police department represented in that meeting as well. We kind of proposed this type of arrangement, and as long as we work closely with those departments to make sure they're educated on exactly where to go and that they know how to get access, neither of those departments had particular concern about this sort of arrangement. Jim, would you say that's accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. They, you know, the fire chief, police chief, you know, were originally asked for clarification. Well, this, how will we get there through East Long Meadow? And the answer is, you don't. It's like Maine, you can't get there from here. But they seem to take comfort in the fact, well, we'll have this in our register. We'll have in our records. If a call comes in, we know we have to go down and back it up and through. And, you know, they were, of course, for anything in East Long Meadow, if there was a gate, they'd have the key or lock or the alarms and that sort of stuff would all be sent to them. Hopefully, you know, subject to some very rare thing, I mean, a truck probably goes in there once a month to mow and take a look at it. There are no employees that are gonna be there. There are no other equipment stored there other than what you see, so, you know, subject to something very rare, there should be almost no activity at this location.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, I got a question for you.
Yes.
So, in this area photographed, that's basically the state line right there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the state line is between these two parts, and then Bilton Road is here, so your access is over here.
That's right.
Okay.
And would there be any security on the site? I mean, you're in the back of nowhere.
That's right.
Kids, hunters go back there.
Yep. Well, we certainly don't staff security personnel, but we do a series of infrared motion-sensitive video cameras that are monitored by, you know, owners of national, and they'll get... Upon motion, they'll get video clip. They have someone in the call center that takes a look at those 24 hours a day, and if they determine that it's a person instead of, you know, like a deer
Yeah.
then they, you know, have a call list for us that they call, and if we give them the approval, then we kind of make a little bit of law enforcement.
Okay, can I ask you another question?
Hmm?
Looking at the area, where is the property that's not owned by Eversource that abuts your property?
Right here.
Oh, it's over here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Our... The edge of our infrastructure would be over 300 feet away from that property line.
Okay, and that's that guy on Peas Road that we just talked about. Okay, gotcha, okay.
John Pearson, I think it is.
John, okay.
At least that's what the records say.
Yeah, he actively farms that area. He was doing Christmas trees for a while, I think. I'm not sure what he's gonna do now, but in any case, he's doing stuff there actively, so...
Artificial Christmas trees.
Yeah. This will be, of course, the second solar farm in our town. We already have one. I don't know if you're aware of that.
I was, although I haven't visited it myself.
Okay, yeah, off Denzil Road to the south, which is also out in the middle of the woods, so nobody knows it's there. Okay, well, I appreciate you giving us the rundown on this, and we will deal with it on the 20th, of course. We'll deal with it on the 20th.
And the other thing I would add just to this summary is, you know, we're sensitive to the fact that we're asking for a zone change.
Right.
And the zone change would be to industrial, and I would expect that people would say, well, if they don't build their solar farm, you can put other industrial uses on that. But, you know, anytime I think that anyone would come in for a zone change that's trying to use land that's not being used, you could pose the same question, you know, and so I think when we come in, we'll have, hopefully, a presentation to you that will highlight the opportunities and the benefits to the town of using this property. I think you have to take the developer in good faith at their word. They're prepared to build a solar project in Connecticut in land they own below it, and it makes sense, you know, if you think about it from a construction standpoint, that they're not gonna start... When their access comes from Summers, they can't build a summer project and paint themselves into a corner in East Long Meadow.
Sure.
They have to start there and move back. But, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to provide an answer to anyone's questions on this and prevent you... Present you with the positives for this in terms of, you know, the whole energy issue, solar
Sure.
and Massachusetts initiatives and the green initiatives and the benefits to the town and the benefits to the community, and hopefully, those will help balance anybody who has any concerns about the fact that somebody would put something back there. And mindful of the fact that if they were gonna try and do that, they need access, and, you know, and even if they say, well, they could buy the parcel from them, it's not a easily accessible piece of property, and right now, it's really not generating anything for the benefit of the town in East Long Meadow.
Sure. Question for the chairman. Instead of a zone change, would a waiver work?
No.
I don't think so legally.
No. The bylaw is written specifically. You can't waive the requirements of the bylaw.
Yeah.
There may be other approaches we can take, but I think we... We're not ready to talk about them yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just want to digest it in my own mind, just the way I asked the question, but...
I think, Mr. Chair, it's correct. I think there are some waivers for sometimes dimensional things, but not for use things.
Not for use like this.
The bylaw, I think, has that in the preamble that you cannot grant.
And I wouldn't want to go there.
A variance or a waiver on a use.
And I wouldn't even want to think about going there because then you're opening it up to anybody to come in and request that.
Which is why we didn't even apply for it.
Yep. Uh, you know, other alternatives would be to, um, modify the bylaws so that you have an overlay district or a solar zone or something like that, okay? But that's something that we would need to discuss.
Yeah, I want to think about it because I, zone change is...
It, it's a big thing.
It's a big thing.
It's not a thing we take lightly, so.
It's permanent, it's everything else.
And, and the only other thing I'd, I'd say, and you're well aware of this, of course, is, uh, once we get the zone change, you're going to need to do a site plan. And the stormwater calculations that come in, our DPW will refer them to a peer review. So just build that into your timeline because...
Certainly, certainly.
You know, we've, we've been through this, uh, a lot recently. And, uh, we want to make sure that when we finally hear the site plan, we've got everything lined up in the right place so that we're not having you come out from Iowa two months in a row to, you know, to do this.
I appreciate you bringing that up and it is a good reminder that we're here tonight, uh, and when we have our public hearing, it will be on the zone change, not the project.
Right, it will be on the zone change.
We're mindful that if we get the zone change after, if we go back to the city council.
Town council, yeah.
Town council, then, then we have to come back and present the project for site design.
Exactly, exactly.
So I've, I've been through that process.
And you guys are real professional, you know what has to be in it, what it has to look like. Okay, so.
Uh, yeah, we, kind of, you know, DEP, Conservation Commission, will, will check all the boxes.
Fine.
So hopefully we'll be back in front of you. If we, uh, or Ms. Browders and the, the planning department want, need any information, you know, we're more than willing to provide whatever in anticipation of the hearing.
Yep.
Otherwise, uh, we'll be back here on the 20th, but thank you for giving us the time to just do a little preview on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
You guys grow anything besides corn out there in Iowa?
Oh, so it means, absolutely.
I drove out to Denver and I went to Iowa and I said, I said, I had never seen such a much corn out there.
And, uh, and wind turbines, we have a lot of wind turbines.
Yep.
A lot of wind energy out there, so, uh, yeah. It's, uh, it's a different type of landscape, for sure.
Okay?
Okay.
So we'll see you on the 20th?
Thank you, folks. Absolutely, I always appreciate you traveling.
Connie, is there anything, uh, I forgot how to get in here last week?
Oh, boy.
Which can be tricky.
It is confusing. Some people don't really know where they're...
May I just bring you up on, up to date on, on the sign permit approval process?
Yeah.
The commercial vehicle definition and then the update to the master plan. So I'm going to work from the bottom up. I was supposed to present to town council the update to the master plan. Unfortunately, I had an accident, as you all know. So I am going to be presenting the master plan to town council. In the meantime, it is posted at our website and through our Facebook link. So if anybody wants to see the results to the survey, survey 1.1, it's out there for your review. And information, sign permit, approval process and commercial vehicle definition. We are just waiting for town council to have this set on their agenda. They have received all the materials, we're just looking for a date. So as soon as we have a date, I think it would be a benefit if members of the planning board were present in the event that town council had questions from the board members. So I'll let you know if you're posted.
Okay.
I'll be back here.